Call the regular city commission meeting on Tuesday, September 11th to order. Will you please stand for this for your allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under your head indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amy, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Chris, here.
Commissioner Perry, here.
Commissioner Scott, here.
Commissioner Wall, here.
Here.
All right, we're all here, ready to start. First item is public discussion, items not on the agenda. Everybody have anything to bring forward? Please come forward and give your name and address.
My name is Judith Kinyonas and I live at 92 Kensington Boulevard. And for a little over two years since we moved in, I've been trying to get someone to come out and check the tree on the boulevard in front of our home. We have a tree that's leaning this way. Now it's covered with black something all over it. And the roots are up and I'm concerned about it. I like it. You know, I'm afraid the whatever's on it might go to the rest of the trees that we've planted.
Sure.
That's my only complaint about Pleasant Ridge. I love Pleasant Ridge. So if someone could...
Come take a look.
Come take a look.
We have somebody, come take a look?
Yeah.
We will be delighted.
Thank you, nice to meet you.
See how quick they are. I'll tell you, this is government in action. In fact, somebody's probably out there right now looking at it.
Hi, I'm Richard Burke from Woodward Heights. I'm here because I wanted to make an inquiry. When the side streets of Bermuda and Indiana were repaved over the summer, the city went back, or the contractor went back and repainted all the lines. All the lines for the stop signs and the crosswalk were done at Indiana. The crosswalk was done at Woodward Heights and Bermuda, but the stop sign lines were not redone. So that seemed to indicate either the contractor didn't do it, or somebody had an intention that they didn't want them repainted, perhaps in anticipation of taking the stop signs out. So I wanted to find out if in fact it was an oversight, or whether it is the intention of the city to remove the stop signs on that part of the street.
Good that you saw those two possibilities.
Yes.
Jim? Yes, the short answer is we are looking at removing those stop signs. We've got the engineers, our traffic consultants, doing the warrant study right now. It kind of came out of when we were looking at the, is a stop sign warranted on Ridge at Oakland Park? And if there's not a three-way stop that's warranted there. So for Woodward Heights in Indiana, I'm sorry Bermuda, I'm guessing that that also does not meet the warrants for a stop sign.
All right, well then I rise and protest. Or I rise to offer a different perspective. I understand some of the rationale for getting rid of the stop signs on Bermuda because they were kind of outlined at a prior commission meeting. One is that they don't stop necessarily people from speeding through Woodward Heights, which is a de facto half-mile road. Another is that basically that seemed to be the main reason is that it doesn't serve any purpose at this moment, so why not get rid of it? I would bring up three points to consider as you go along. I understand that the stop signs aren't necessarily going to stop speeding on the street. But there are other reasons why it's easier to speed along Woodward Heights. One is a lot of people carry a lot of momentum when they come from Ferndale side of Woodward Heights into Pleasant Ridge. One is they're either anxious because they've been waiting at the train crossing station. Another is that there used to be a flashing light at the intersection of Bermuda and Woodward Heights more than two decades ago. In fact, at the time, two decades ago, some residents on Woodward Heights came to the commission and said, "We're concerned about our young children and the speeding going on on the street." And oh, by the way, while we're saying this to you, we noticed that the light at the intersection has stopped working. This prompted an investigation and it turned out there, I think if I remember the history correctly, the light there used to be a flashing red. Then it was struck by lightning and it turned into a flashing yellow. And when we said something about, and then it may have gone totally dormant. So when we brought this up and said, "Hey, can we restore this?", it was discovered that the light was technically owned by Oakland County. And after this had been brought to their attention, the county did what anyone would do and said, "Let's get rid of it." So that kind of facilitated the speeding going into Pleasant Ridge from that side of the city. I'm here to say, I understand that the stop signs are not going to stop speeding on the street. And you can only catch so much by doing occasional speed traps. I would say this, if you decide that out-of-town drivers are going to decide whether we have stop signs in Pleasant Ridge, then you should consider some other things. One of the things that was said was that if you go, if you have a stop sign at Bermuda, you can still get up to 35 miles per hour before you hit the next stop sign at Indiana. Well, I say if you take the stop sign out at Bermuda, then you could probably get up to 45 miles per hour before you even hit the stop sign at Indiana, coming all the way through Woodward Heights. Second, the stop signs there do serve a purpose, and that's for those of us who are trying to get to work, we're trying to get somewhere between the rush hour hours of 7:30 to 9:00 in the morning and between, say, 3:30 to 5:30 at night, there's an unusually large amount of traffic. Granted, it's episodic, but we do have people who come, who drop off their kids at the Ferndale High School on the next block, and they make that left turn and then they come up our street. And basically, the only practical chance we have of getting out of our driveways, those of us who are closest to where the stop sign is, is those people having to obey the stop sign and coming to a stop and then us deciding if we want to go out and then go. A lot of people make it more difficult by kind of doing the slow stop through the light, I mean through the traffic sign. But basically, if you have all that traffic coming through without the stop signs, it could make it a little bit more difficult. I will notice, I will say that one of my neighbors, when I told her that I think, I thought the city was going to get rid of the stop signs was irate, and she said, "I can't wait to see the city commission if they try to do that." So wow, two people, but anyway. So I think these, yeah. So these are things I think you should consider as you do your study, is that at a certain point, you have to decide how much, how much you basically want to turn Woodward Heights into the Wild West of the east side of Woodward Heights, and how much you want to experiment to see how fast somebody can go when they're encumbered for a good 100, 150 yards as they come into the city. And that is it.
Thank you.
Just a few follow-up points on that. We're doing the engineering study right now to see if it's warranted to remove the stop sign. Before we did, we'll run a test period before we make that a permanent decision. So the plan would be to take the stop sign out, run a test for a couple weeks. We'll put our speed counter up. It's an unobtrusive box that measures how fast, speed and volume of traffic on a street. So we'll do that before and then during the test, so we can compare what's the impact on travel speeds. All of the studies and literature on stop signs, you find that, you know, cars actually go faster after an unwarranted stop sign because people are trying to make up for lost time. I don't know if that's going to be the case here, but you know, suspect it might be the case. Also, Woodward Heights is different than most streets in town. As Mr. Burke noted, it is a half-mile road. So Woodward Heights and Ridge are the two streets that really connect outside of the community, other than Woodward, of course. But if you're talking about more local streets, so they're different. They carry more traffic, they carry traffic that sometimes wants to go to higher speed. And also Woodward Heights is 30 feet wide, it's not 27 feet wide like most of our residential streets. So we've got some other things. So one of the things we're doing is hopefully next month, we'll be rolling out our traffic calming manual. And it'll be a new policy for how we approach traffic calming on our residential streets. It's going to be really a resident and block-driven approach. But we've been working on Ridge because that's where we had the highest volumes and speeds. So over the past few years, we've been working on Ridge to slow down, calm traffic there. And we have, actually, the average, the 85th percentile speed is about four miles lower per hour than it was a few years ago. That's a big difference. Woodward Heights is a street that we want to look at next for doing traffic calming, for doing design interventions that make people want to drive, or only feel comfortable driving at a lower speed, rather than artificial and really ineffective speed-controlling stop signs. Now, there are some of the points that Mr. Burke raised about getting out of his driveway. We'll see how that goes during the test period. Because we'll be doing this probably next spring, school will still be in session, you want to run these things when school is in, because it's different than the summer months. And we'll see. We'll live it and we'll get feedback on how it went.
Now, there used to be another stop sign right in Bermuda, at the Ferndale?
Looks like it.
Wasn't there, it was a flashing light? Just a flashing light?
Yeah.
I knew there was something, but that, that kind of slowed, slowed traffic too, and then they got rid of that.
Right. And that...
I'm not sure why that was removed, but...
That's probably a more appropriate place for a stop sign because the traffic volumes on those two streets are much closer. And I don't know if it would be warranted there or not, you'd have to do the study, but you know, my suspicion is it's more warranted there than at our Bermuda. But that's the approach. So once we get the traffic calming manual in place, because we want to focus on Woodward Heights, we'll probably do some special meetings for Woodward Heights residents to, I guess, introduce the options for what we can do out there in place of the stop sign. Because we know it's different.
So there will be opportunities. How we will be ready. How we will be ready.
Good, good. That's what we want. That's good.
All right, great.
Mayor, just, I've not ever asked this question, is Woodward Heights a city or county road?
City.
Okay. Just curious why the lighting would have been county lighting?
The road commission actually owns and operates the pedestrian-actuated light at the school. So they oftentimes do own the signals, even if it's not their street.
Okay. Thank you.
I forgot to ask about that.
Could you come forward?
Yeah. Again, my name is Judith Kinyonas and I would love to know when they're going to sweep our streets.
Today.
So we can have their cars, because we're on the side of the street that the cars park. And I try to keep all the leaves and whatever debris is on the street when the cars move because I'm lucky to be home. I try to keep it cleaned up. But we can make sure that we have four cars in our home, so we can make sure they're off the road, so...
Second Tuesday.
Always the second Tuesday?
That's the goal. So we have to contract out for the service.
Right.
So the challenge for us is that it's hard, we can't consistently and reliably say, "Don't park on the street second Tuesday because street sweeping is going to happen."
No.
We have a contractor. You know, some cities are big enough that they can have their own equipment, street drones, sweep their own streets, you can keep a more consistent schedule that way. But second Tuesday.
Okay.
And then if it's not done the second Tuesday, it'll be second Wednesday. If it's not done second Wednesday, so starting the second Tuesday, keep an eye out because it's coming that day or shortly thereafter.
Okay, thank you very much.
And they can get the whole city in one day?
Yes.
Great. Because I didn't see it today, but...
It was, we were out here when I drove in this morning.
That's it? Did you see any? I didn't see.
No.
Anyway, all right. Moving on, any other public discussion? Okay, let's move on to governmental reports and we'll start with our chief of police, Chief Yower.
I defer to the...
Huh? I'm sorry, I always keep the best for last, so...
I thought you'd go next to that.
Wow.
I'm going to turn that air off now. It's not working properly, just so you know, it went down. Pipes are hot or so, so we'll have to get it checked. The only couple things I have are, school is back open, obviously Lower Ferndale, and the traffic is, they have more students, bad. They have a lot more students this year. The other day, we had four policemen out there, a couple Ferndale guys, myself and whoever else was working that day. And they just have a lot more students, a lot more parents, a lot more cars. So we are in the process of addressing that because the school got complaints, we got complaints, Ferndale Police got complaints, the superintendent...
I can update that, too.
Right. So we want to make people residents and local people aware, they know school starts around 8:00 AM and they know it gets out around 3:00 PM. Find an alternate route if you can to avoid that because we found we have people passing now, it's clearly marked double-yellow, passing on the wrong side and, you know, people's, the students and their parents and people running or jogging or walking are number one safety out there, especially with all the volume of cars and everything, when you're passing on the wrong side, which we had clearly marked, and we had the road repaved to enforce that. I understand that people have to get somewhere, we all have to get somewhere, but we have to obey the rules and the laws, too, and take people's safety into account.
However, as I quoted, I, the superintendent, Sergeant Reed, me, Officer Simpson from Ferndale, and the city planner from Ferndale, we all actually met out there on Friday during the thick of the backup. Because this year, we know it gets backed up. This year, it's been worse than it's been any year so far. Usually it calms down after a month or so, parents kind of find, you know, the rhythm, the beginning of the month, the beginning of school, September's always bad. We went through a number of potential solutions, potential options. One of the things we talked about was rerouting, flipping the buses from Oak Ridge to the parking lot side and flipping the pickup to Oak Ridge so that they would, basically instead of driving up to Cambridge to turn to get into school, they would drive up to Oak Ridge and turn and pick up on that side of the school for students. And then there's some benefits to that. You go down Oak Ridge and then you can either turn on Livery or keep going to Woodward. Because when you turn out onto Cambridge, you can't, you have to go to Woodward. So that creates another backup. So we talked about that as one potential way of at least removing the backup from the crosswalk where all of the students and parents are crossing. Because we've got 50 or 100 people who go back and forth across that crosswalk. And from a risk management perspective, that's the point where you've got the most danger for a pedestrian car incident, where you've got all the kids crossing. Very few people cross Ridge or Pine Crest south of Oak Ridge. So you eliminate that conflict point. Heard back from the schools today, well, the buses can't make the turn out of the parking lot and there's only three concrete pads that lead out to the street from the sidewalk on the south side of the school. So during the winter time, kids would be in the slush, so no, it's impossible, we can't do it. So, you know, we, I'm frustrated, and I'll admit, I'm frustrated with the schools on this one. Because they won't, they won't do anything in their parking lot which would potentially be dangerous. They don't care what happens on the street, basically is what it comes down to. Because there's solutions to this. There's, you know, we can eliminate this conflict point. They're not willing to. So I don't know. I don't know where we go from here. It is what it is. I've found traffic engineering studies from the early 90s, from almost 30 years ago, about this exact same issue. I don't know what you do with it. We're just, we're kind of steamed. The only thing we could do would be to close Cambridge at Ridge, just close it.
There you go.
And then the school can't create that. That's one way we get to solve the problem.
There's a plan, let's close it.
And you know what, I'm being sort of glib, you know, when I say that.
But you're ready.
But this is frustration.
Let's test it out.
You know, this is frustration because my daughter was a Kennedy when a little girl got ran over in the street in front of that school four years ago. So you know, it's, this one is a little personal to me. And no one's willing to really step up, so...
And we've discussed different options since I've been here, which is 12 years now. It's been going that I've seen. We've offered many different, what we thought were solutions to problems, but again, like City Manager Bruckman said, the school's been reluctant, to say the least, to listen or try to make changes there. On Thursday, I was there, standing in the middle of the new little island there with the crossing guard, when a gentleman who lived in Ferndale, who was about eight or 10 cars south of that yet, decided that he had waited long enough.
Oh, it's getting better.
And he passed on the double-yellow and I stopped him and I had him pull over and, you know, issued him some violations or he had more going on than just that. But his argument was that he had somewhere to go. He was tired of waiting. He proceeded slowly and he honked his horn. But he thought the double-yellow lines are just lane markers and not no passing, so... We actually printed letters for every student to take home, they'll be delivered to the school tomorrow to remind the parents of all the different things that we've addressed that the city incurs the cost for to send home because the school doesn't want to print those either. So we did that today to send them and they're going to go home with every student, every parent. I was told that there's a little over 535 or so students there now. And that school was designed as a walk-up school back from way back, probably in the 50s or even earlier. And it doesn't really handle the traffic flow that you have there.
Well, he's a parking lot's a baseball guy.
Right. So like I said, our concern is the safety of the people all around, in the school property and all around it that go to and from. So I just want to remind people that if they can avoid that area around 8:00 AM and around 3:00 PM, please do.
I mean, how do they, how can the school just say, "It's your problem, you figure it out"? I mean, that's essentially what they're throwing.
How about the two superintendents or two principals at that school on this issue?
I saw you talking.
And I invite anybody who wants to come and look and watch, you know, they can come and watch and have their input and then notify the school. A lot of the parents are upset because we direct them, I mean, we got to clear the road and everything, and you got cars coming from every direction at the same time. And they're frustrated, too, because they're just trying to pick their child up and the school parking lot's small. And they don't allow like two rows of cars to come in because they don't want students or parents crossing in the parking lot. And I said, "Well, you could put 10 or so in and then move the whole group." But they don't want to double up either, they want to just, they're just concerned about their school and their area. So that's pretty much it. On a brighter note...
Yes.
Well, today, we all know, is the September 11, 2001 anniversary. I had the opportunity, State Representative Wittenberg invited me to be his guest at the Capitol on Thursday, the 6th, for a memorial ceremony that they have every year at the Capitol. So it was my first year of being invited and going to that. It was very well done. I want to thank him publicly for that. I told him I would give a shout-out for him. But it was interesting to watch him at work on the Capitol floor there, very well respected and received and everybody there. So we have a good, a very good state representative. I just want to reiterate that. It's a shame that they have term limits, but hopefully he can...
Yes, the Senate.
Well, I'm right. But it was an honor to be his guest there, it was a very well-done ceremony, and it was interesting to watch him work the floor. So hopefully good things in the future from him.
Cool.
Excellent.
That's all I have.
Thanks for talking.
And sorry about the air.
Thank you. We'll let that between the two of you. All right, please, Chief.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, I owe Commissioner Wall an apology. You tried to contact me and, you know, little devices and big fingers, I think I deleted you and then forgot that you tried to contact me. But I will get with you after the meeting and find out what you need. Fire department, we're down about a third of our personnel. I had two out in surgery, one has got a broken hand, and five bodies are missing, and then I got a sergeant retiring. So we're still fighting the battle of the hiring pool is very small and very shallow. So finding good people is getting difficult. In fact, I even had five people on conditional offers of employment and two of them bugged out because Ferndale was too far to drive, but they really wanted to be part of what was going on here. And I'm like, not if it was too far to drive, you didn't want to run that big a part of it.
It was a secret how far it was.
Yeah, and I can't, you know, I can't imagine not talking to your family and figuring that one out before you go through this whole application process. Waste my time, so. After three or four guys helped me from, no, I didn't.
I think it's just as well you didn't get in.
Yeah, no, it proves the point that even with the system, some scorely people can get through. But we're working on six right now, the police department's doing background investigations. And I think we got six really dedicated, good people, so hopefully I'll get them on board and start it by, fingers crossed, the 24th of September. Because we do two 40-hour weeks of all the federal, state, and local law, and that we have to have them before we cut them loose on the streets. And then we test them and make sure they're up to par on their medic and their rescue and their hazmat and their other things we need to know. And then fit them with gear and then cut them loose. And then, we got a really good training program now, so I'm confident that anybody that isn't quite up to par will figure that out and help them get where they need to be before we cut them loose on the civilian population.
Very good.
Any questions for me?
Can you tell us a little bit more about what you do at the schools? Just because, seeing the picture?
Our police chief, Vinnie Palazzola, took drug forfeiture money and bought Jacob's kit. Jacob's kit, Jacob was one of the little boys who was shot and killed, but he wasn't shot and killed by the bullet, although the bullet caused the damage, he bled to death because no one got in and stopped his bleeding in time. His parents have done a national initiative. I just went with 50 Oakland County people to FEMA and we went through the FEMA team training for four days on complex coordinated attacks within Oakland County, how we would respond to that, meaning the terrorists have targeted five or six locations and are trying to overwhelm the resources that you have, even though Oakland County's resource-rich. So during that, we found out that the majority of people in these school shootings, from data retrieved from all the horrid things that have occurred, are pretty much from the nipple line up wounds. So the Jacob's kit has a couple tourniquets, bleeding stop gauze, trauma shears, a large abdominal bleeding pad, gloves for the first aider, and chest seals. So if you're shot through the chest, you can seal the wound, otherwise when you get a hole in the chest, when you breathe in, the air goes in the hole, not down in your lungs, and that's where you get what they call a sucking chest wound. I did have about six female teachers got very physically upset. And I said, "I apologize that we have to train teachers in grade schools, junior highs and high schools in combat medicine," which this is really combat medicine. But our best tool against this is knowledge and your teachers. So how do we beat these people? We educate everyone how to stop that. So a lot of people perish because of bleeding, but if someone had just stopped the bleeding, there's a good chance with surgery that we would have saved a higher percent of the people that have died in these things. But fear controls people and they're all running around and people don't realize, just stop and plug the hole, literally. And so we did that. We taught all the teachers, some of the mannequins, you had to stuff into a wound, which most human beings don't like to put their fingers into other people's wounds, much, cover them, much less stuff them. But we trained them. And one of these Jacob kits was put in every classroom and by the Ferndale PD from drug forfeiture. So they're prepared and we'll continually work with them in case, so it doesn't matter if a kid was running on the playground, there was a concrete worker and left a stake and they fell on it, poked a hole in their chest, these teachers and that will know how to handle it and will have the equipment right with them until help arrives. It was a very good program. There were a lot of police officers from the surrounding areas, state police, Oak Park. I think you guys were invited to come. I had about five or six firefighters and we were able to train, I think, about 250 staffers and we did everybody.
That's great.
Janitors, administration, teachers, coaches. You work in a school, you got trained. So I think that not arming everybody with the knowledge of how to save a life is going to prevent, I'm hoping, knock on wood, the more prepared we are, the less chance of anybody doing something that ridiculously stupid in our schools. But we're ready. So it was a very, it was a very good program. And it was thanks to Vinnie that he started it, but he came to us to do the education component because medicine is our number-one thing.
Great. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Nice to see you. Rob?
I'm tardy, mark me down, please.
Good you're here. All right, moving on to next, it's city commission liaison reports and we'll start with Commissioner Wall and the recreation commission.
We are having our next meeting October 20.
We are having our next meeting, October 24th. We met and discussed the master plan that we'll be talking about today a little bit, and it's exciting. We got input from all the, everybody in this, everyone who filled out the survey and took that into consideration, and I think it's going to be exciting. We have our hayride, 21st, 3:00 PM over at Gainesboro Park. That's always a lot of fun, caramel apples, pony rides, potential llama. Be a good time.
Do we get the hand dip again?
The hand dip.
The hand dip?
And wax.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah, I think that we're doing that again, too. And then if you haven't checked out, the rec, the big room in the rec room, they start the demolition. So that's going to be ready in a couple months, and that's very exciting. So, that's pretty much what I have.
All right. Thank you. Any questions? Okay. We'll move on to Commissioner Krzyak with Ferndale Public Schools.
Thank you, Mayor, and I just want to thank Commissioner Perry for filling in with the report last month. This September, obviously, is the serve, the academic year, and I thought I'd begin the liaison report with a message from Danya Abasi, Superintendent of Ferndale Schools, as I think it nicely encapsulates what makes the district unique and shine. She wrote, "Our theme this year is change, challenge, and excel. As a school family, we are committing to challenging ourselves and our students, that we will make small changes as adults that will result in big differences in the lives of our students, and we will have the mindset that all can excel. Today, more than ever, our students look to all of us as role models. We must ensure that every student feels welcome, nurtured, safe, valued, and that their rights and liberties are respected every day. Never underestimate the value of what you do. You truly make a difference. Wishing everyone a great school year. Danya Abasi, PhD Superintendent of Ferndale Schools." And I just thought that was a great way to kick off the school year. Obviously, in there, she didn't mention the traffic issues.
Right.
Highlight, but I do recommend that if you are interested in discussing the traffic at Lower Elementary, that the next school board meeting is Monday, September 17th at 7:00 PM. I'll be there, and I'll be sure to, if it's not mentioned, talk about it, just because I share Jim's concern, and I know we all do, about the safety of the kids, and hopefully, to your point, Jim, that it's something that, over the course of the first month of school, it kind of works itself out, but hopefully, by October, if we haven't figured it out, we can figure out what we need to do to make it better. So, school board meeting on the 17th. Other dates, Fuel Curriculum Night is tomorrow, September 12th at 6:00, and the High School Curriculum Night is Thursday from 6:30 to 7:30. Also this year, there'll be a new visitor credential exchange program, so visitors to the schools in the district, when you come to the office now, you'll have to present a photo ID, and you'll have to leave that at the office in exchange for visitor badges, and the visitor badges will enable you to conduct your business in school. Upon conducting your business, you'll have to return, then you'll get your photo ID. I think, as Chief Sullivan mentioned, there's a lot of things that a lot of concerned people at all levels are doing right now to make sure that our kids are safe, and this is in that spirit. A nice little story from David A. Kelly. He's the author of the Ballpark Mystery Series, and he recently donated books to encourage reading at the elementary school. So David A. Kelly, he's had some success with his books, the Ballpark Mystery Series for Kids, and one of the parents mentioned how his particular stories really inspired her child into a love of reading. So it was really cool to see him work with the district on that. And again, school board meeting, Monday, September 17th at 7:00 PM at the high school. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Next, Commissioner Perry, Planning and DDA.
Thank you, Mayor. The Planning Commission and DDA did not meet this past month, but we will be meeting on Monday, October 22nd, right here at City Hall, so hopefully you'll join us. But the one thing that did happen that the DDA has to do with is the chariot did happen for the...
Oh, totally.
And it sounds like, I think the city manager can give us an update later, or now, or whatever, but it sounds like there was some good ridership there.
Yeah, we had probably, since the city manager's report is after closed sessions tonight, I'll update it now. I think we had about 80 to 100 riders each day.
That's fantastic.
Yeah.
Especially for a new program.
Yeah.
And a very rainy day.
Very rainy. They were not, there was not great weather, and it was a little bit of short notice. It was a little rush getting it set up this year, so we didn't promote it as much as we maybe would have liked to have, but those, yeah, we were happy with those numbers. That's great. And there's a big spike in app downloads, so.
Good.
Should have worn my chariot shades.
Yeah. No, but that was, yeah, that's going to be exciting. And then how is the program, how's it going to work moving forward?
So it should start the weekend of the 21st.
Okay.
The stops in Pleasant Ridge are going to be the same that they were for the Arts Pizza needs weekend.
Okay.
So it'll be at Sylvan, in between the alley and Woodward.
Okay.
And then the other one is at probably across the street from Hessel Park in front of the school, going down Oxford Cambridge. And then the route will take you down into Ferndale. There's a number of stops, which you can find on the app, the chariot app, including Liverno Tap.
Yay!
That actually wasn't, that wasn't on the initial route, but they got asked so many times in the initial feedback, here and everywhere in Ferndale.
They're going right there.
That they added Liverno Tap as a stop.
Oh, that's excellent.
Yeah. So yeah, March, or I'm sorry, September 21st, it'll be Thursday, Friday, Saturday nights from 4:00 PM to midnight.
And I'm sure Liverno Tap will be a good advertiser moving forward, too, so.
All right. Great.
Great. Thank you.
Forward to midnight. All right. Thank you. Next, Commissioner Scott and Historical Commission.
Yes, just a couple of quick notes, and thanks to Commissioner, Historical Commissioner, Amber Herrick, for filling in with notes this month. The Historical Commission is working on digitizing the contents of the museum. It's interesting that members, or members of the community bring things to the museum, but they don't always get cataloged. So there are some great things that are contained there that you might not realize are there, so there's an effort to sort of catalog it and be certain what is contained in there. So you'll see that coming up. Also, the Then Now Committee is meeting regularly to update the record, the historical record of the city. It's really interesting to collect information about what's happened to the city. There was a book published some time ago, and it's just time to update the history of the city with new findings and whatever information they learn from residents and from themselves. So we'll hear more about that over time. There's some thinking going on about the next speaker series, so the last one was such a hit that I'm absolutely certain the next one will be great. Thank you, John. And lastly, the Poabook tiles, if those of you that don't already have the square Poabook tile, they're available here in City Hall. In fact, you can see one on the counter of the hall, so if you're interested in having one, by all means, grab one there. The proceeds help to keep the museum in top shape and other things around the city. That's it for today. Oh, the next meeting is October 3rd at 7:00 PM here in City Hall.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for anybody? All right. We will move on. Item seven is the consent agenda. Five basic items. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Your Honor, I move that the consent agenda be approved.
Okay.
All right. Any questions? May we pick them up, please?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Wall?
Yes.
Commissioner Krzyak?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes, motion carries. Next item, traffic control orders. Number 192, no turn on red, Oakland Park Boulevard, Woodward Avenue. And number 93, no turn on red, Sylvan Avenue, Woodward Avenue. And before I turn it over to Jim to talk about it, let me just say, "A wonderful idea." This is great. I'm happy to stop. I have to do it anyway, so. It's fine. Right. Yeah, so this is, we're kind of doing a series of looks around town at some of these, I guess, issues that have been existent for years in the Oakland Park, Woodward intersection, Oakland Park, and Sylvan, but most of the changes we're making are on the west side at Oakland Park. We've taken a deep dive. We had Giffles Webster, a transportation engineer there, who I've worked with over the years a number of times, in respect highly, had him look at this with basically a fresh set of eyes, and to give us a series of recommendations for how we can make this intersection more comfortable and safe for pedestrians and bicyclists. So there's a few things that we're in the midst of implementing at this intersection. And before we go on, I'll point a couple things out. At Sylvan and Woodward, things are fairly straightforward. The crosswalks go more or less perpendicularly across Woodward. There's four lanes of traffic. The crossing across Sylvan is normal. It's a 27-foot-wide street there. When you compare this with this beast, it's quite a bit different on the west side. This is closer to 100 feet across than 27, so it takes you three times as long to just get across Oakland Park here. You've got five lanes of traffic, because there's that right turn only lane that actually ends at Oakland Park. The angle of this stop bar is such that when you're crossing this way, cars pull up and block the view of anyone in this lane coming to make a turn of a pedestrian in the crosswalk. So a lot of times, you're blind to oncoming traffic. That's not a great situation. And then, here, one thing I'd also point out is this stop bar, compare the difference between the curb and the stop bar here, it's very close, compared to the curb and the stop bar here. And the implication of this is if you're a pedestrian waiting to cross here on the north side at Sylvan, if you're on the northeast corner of Sylvan and Woodward waiting to go across, you are essentially in the blind spot of the driver, who is focused entirely on traffic coming this way. So the driver's not looking at you. Same situation here, if you're waiting to cross Woodward at the southeast corner, heading eastbound. But the difference is, with this distance, you are more in that driver's cone of vision, even if they're looking south, because they're more in front of you. So even if they're looking south, there's a better chance they're going to catch you out of peripheral vision. Here, where we have many issues, you are not, because your peripheral vision is just such that it doesn't pick up people, pedestrians, bicyclists, either coming northbound on the west side of the street, and, you know, you're not supposed to ride bikes on the sidewalk, but nobody's insane and rides bikes on Woodward. So people ride their bikes on both sides of Woodward in both directions. So one issue that we run into is bicyclists riding with the crosswalk. So they're crossing with the, you know, with the pedestrian crossing signal. Drivers coming this way are focused on traffic here. If there's a break in traffic, oftentimes start to go, even when there's a pedestrian or bicyclist coming from the south. And a very common incident that we have is a car hitting a pedestrian or bicyclist here, because they don't see them. The other is when you're waiting to cross this way, and a driver's focused here, when the light changes, pedestrian starts to go, driver's not looking this way, they're looking at traffic this way, and that creates another conflict point. So, there's a few things that we're doing to help address these known issues that we have with geometry out there. First is, we've been working with MDOT to change the actual layout of the street, so we're putting corner bump outs, and the result is going to be, and these are concept, these aren't the final designs, the final designs are a little bit different, but it's basically creating a situation on this side of Woodward that's more similar here. The distance between the pedestrian landing point and the stop bar is farther, to put you more in the peripheral vision of that driver. Shortening up this crossing, it's not getting down to 27 feet like it is on Sylvan, but it is much closer to 40 feet instead of 100 feet, so that'll help. And then it's also going to change the geometry of the cross of the stop bar here. So that's one thing. We're going to be, MDOT's going to be constructing that next year as part of the signals project we're doing, so that will change the layout of that corner. We're also going to be looking at doing bike boxes. This will be something to do after MDOT's out of town, but this is, bike boxes are for bicyclists who are crossing Woodward, from Oakland Park to Sylvan, or from Sylvan to Oakland Park, eastbound and westbound. A bike box is something that you have where it's basically skipped to the front of the line. If you're a bicyclist, you're supposed to be, you're basically a vehicle. You're supposed to obey the rules of the road. Well, a bike box is a painted-off area where bicyclists go, and it's ahead of the stop bar. So cars stop at the stop bar, bicyclists ride forward, get in front of traffic, and then, when the light changes, they go. It's a way of making bicyclists more visible when you're crossing across Woodward here. And even with my nine and my six-year-old, when we cross here, I take them out into the street and just go in front of traffic, because it's the safest way to do it. If you're in front of a car, they'll generally not hit you, particularly from a stop. So bike boxes are something that we'll be implementing after all of these other changes are done.
What's the timeline?
Next summer or fall. Timeline for the corner improvements? Timeline for these is spring, early summer. We'll do the bike boxes after that's done.
Okay, good. That's exciting.
Yeah. When do we do the official no turn? So, and so that brings me to the final point. With all of these changes that we're making, with bike boxes, with the bump outs, with everything, one of the options that was in the engineer's report was to simply make these no turn on red. So if you're on Oakland Park, heading eastbound, Sylvan heading westbound, it'll be posted, no turn on red. That'll eliminate the conflict point of bicyclists or pedestrians coming from the south or the north, and cars hitting them as they're looking at traffic this way. I was out on a Friday two weeks ago, and a bicyclist got hit here in that exact way. He was okay. He went to the hospital, dinged up, because he was riding his bike northbound, car didn't see him, hit him as they were turning on red. So, no turn on red, we can implement this immediately. It'll, it'll make more intuitive sense for drivers why there's a no turn on red, once all of these other improvements come into place, but we can, there's no reason to wait for that in the short run. But it's going to help them, and I mean, on Sylvan onto Woodward, because of the way the traffic parks on Woodward, you have to get into the crosswalk. Yes. To be able to see southbound. Yes. So you're already blocking people who are bicycling, you're constantly backing, you know, backing up, trying to figure out what to do. Right. And then, I know, been told many times, on the other side, it's only one lane, but nobody treats it one lane. You've got people who are going to go straight across feel the necessity to move to the left. Right. So because somebody's going to honk their horn behind you that wants to turn. So if you just eliminate those possibilities. Yes. There won't be that kind of need, you won't have the pressure to do that. Yeah.
The pressure's real.
It is real. Yeah. And, and when we narrow this, it's going to be much, it's not going to be possible to double stack. Well, it will be, but it's going to be really tight to double stack. So, again, putting the no turn on red, it's going to eliminate the incentive to double stack, to stay in one lane. Right. So, so we are doing the no turn on red. I just wanted to make the point with all these improvements, that these are the first in a series of steps to hopefully, you know, make this a little saner intersection and more comfortable for pedestrians going in all directions. Good. Good.
That is exciting. It's been something everybody's been clamoring for, for a long time.
Yeah. Are there any, any questions from Jim? Just on process, so in order to do this, there's a traffic control order that you have to create. This is the engineering study that we are relying upon to do the traffic control order. The full study is in your packet, and that's all I have. Happy to answer any follow-up questions. Any other questions?
Thank you, Mayor, and thanks, Jim, for going over that. And our packet, and our packet is available online, so I really encourage residents who have been concerned about this intersection to really, it's a, it's a brief but really dense summarization of the problems that we've been encountering at this intersection for years and years, and the solutions are really clearly laid out, so if you are interested in this, definitely check out this online in the meeting materials. And looking at the meeting materials, I was really appreciative of the way that they laid out the options, and how you've talked about how all these options together will create a safer intersection for everybody. And we've talked about the bike boxes, you talked about the lane closures, no turn on red. I know option three is for pedestrian push buttons. Is that something that we're, we are considering at this time or is that something that we're not going to look at right now or?
There's a few considerations with the pedestrian push buttons. One is cost. Because of that, you have to put in all the infrastructure for a push button. You have to hang the case sign by the stoplights across the intersection. The advantage of that is that during slower traffic periods, cars could still turn right onto Woodward. Sometimes a day, you can't turn right anyways, so it's not an issue.
Right.
Drawbacks of that are that if a driver's not paying attention, you know, somebody could come up and hit that to cross. But if they're not paying attention because they're still looking at traffic, you may not see it. So it's, it's staff's recommendation that we just simply make it no turn on red all the time. So that for drivers, there's no ambiguity, there's no question coming up to that. They don't have to look for a sign that tells them yes or no because, you know, for better or worse, they're not paying a lot of attention this way. You know, you don't do this. Sometimes, I, you know, I do because I see the reports of people who get hit there. But most drivers don't look this way at traffic and then look this way at no cars or oncoming when they're about to make the turn. So for that reason, we decided to go forth with just no turn on red all the time. And so we put up a sign, and it's always in effect. And drivers will have to adjust to that.
So because one of the considerations was if we do the pedestrian push buttons, then that would activate a sign that said no turn on red, right?
Correct.
But is it, is there also a possibility that activating the pedestrian push button would also elongate the stop and give pedestrians longer time to cross? Was that something we could do or?
Possibly. Yes, yes, you can do that. That's a short answer. Being an MDOT road and being that the lights are timed along Woodward to optimize traffic flow and everything else, MDOT's willingness to entertain that option along Woodward is approaching zero.
Well, that leads me to my, one of my other questions because I know we've been, and I know Amy has been here a very long time and, you know, you've been here a long time now. Dealing with MDOT has always been communicating to us as, you know, sometimes fruitful, sometimes a tease, sometimes just, you know, straight up disheartening. This experience, I'm getting the sense, was somewhat positive as far as working with MDOT on this project.
Yes. And I mean, I have to, I have to give MDOT a lot of credit that when we brought these options to them and they were already doing their signals project, they said, okay, well, we'll, we'll build this for you. And throughout the process on this, they've been very accommodating. There's really been no pushback at all from them on the corner bump outs to eliminate that right turn lane.
Well, that's great to hear.
Yeah. So that's been very, very fruitful and a very good experience, I will say, with MDOT.
I'm so glad to hear that because that's kind of hopefully further conversations down the road, past these improvements, past some of, you know, the other tricky spots along Woodward. Hopefully, we can kind of build on that goodwill.
MDOT now versus MDOT 10 years ago even?
Different story.
Different ballgame.
I'm really glad to hear it. Yeah, that's really encouraging. Okay. And then what, I, I'm sorry if I missed it, but the MDOT, the actual signals project, that is something that they're working on all down, up and down Woodward?
Yeah, so they're updating and modernizing the signals, which, you know, they're going to put in different signals. I'm not exactly sure what the benefit of that is. The other thing they're doing is they're, it's a crosswalks project. So they're all, they were already going to be working at all the crosswalks because they don't have the ADA plates, they don't have the crosswalk design that meets current ADA, Americans with Disabilities Act standards. That's something that they're supposed to do. The last time they resurfaced Woodward, I think that was 2013 or 14, they pushed it off. So they're coming back now to do that.
Okay.
So that's the project. And it starts at this intersection and then works north up through Birmingham.
Oh, okay. Good. All right. Yeah, no, that was only, the only questions I had, you know, as far as the actual options, the push button option. And then really grateful to hear that this MDOT relationship is improving. That's all I have, Mayor.
Anything else?
Quick question. Will the, will the no turn on red sign be mounted to the signal or on the road?
No, it will be, we have to find a location.
Okay. I was just thinking, if people aren't looking at the right, then they won't see the sign.
Right. It will, it will be before or on the stop sign.
Got it.
I actually have to check the Michigan manual on uniform traffic control devices, what the standard is for where you put that thing.
Cool. Thank you.
Great.
Anything else? All right. Can I get a motion to approve the traffic control orders?
Mayor, I move that the traffic control order number 192 and 193 be approved.
Is there support?
Support.
Any more discussion? Can we have a vote, please?
Commissioner Wall?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Kruzia?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes. Motion carries. Next item, establish a public hearing on Tuesday, November 13th, 2018 at 7:30 PM to consider the Pleasant Ridge Parks and Recreation Master Plan. Jim, back to you.
Yes. So the Recreation Commission this spring and summer has been working on an updated Parks and Recreation Master Plan. This is something that we are, I guess, required to do. We're not really required, but if you want to be eligible for any kind of state funding through the DNR, you have to have a five-year Parks and Recreation Plan on the books. Our current plan, believe it or not, expires in 2019.
It's crazy.
So, and that was really the plan that launched the Gainesboro Park. Not launched, but I mean, Gainesboro Park was, there's momentum for that before that plan, but it really was the motive force for that project. And then the foundation funded it after that plan was adopted and off we went. But the next plan is 2019 through 2023, which, 2023, I don't know. It's a little mind boggling.
Scary.
This plan, you have big plans and then you have small plans. The last plan was a big plan. And, you know, we've done a lot of the big things. This plan is a small plan. We knew coming out of the Gainesboro Park project that that was phase one. We have phase two now of all the other improvements at Gainesboro and elsewhere in the city that still need to be done. Typically, those are smaller projects, bite-sized projects that we can do, one a year, just in an ongoing fashion. So this plan, we focused on what are those projects? What's the appetite and desire of the community? What do people want to see? The biggest parts of this, the biggest components of this plan were a series of two surveys. One, a general survey that we did in the spring that asked people just tracking questions that we asked on the last Parks and Recreation Master Plan process, just to see how things have changed over the years. And then an open-ended or a series of questions that tried to identify what kind of projects people wanted to see. So we took that list of projects and then found the ones that, you know, there was a number, they were mentioned a number of times. So we took that and then we combined it with a short list of projects that we had developed with the Rec Commission, with the City Commission as part of the Gainesboro Park project over the years. We took those two lists, put them together. Part two of the input process was a prioritization exercise where we gave everybody five points or at the ice cream social at the pool, $500 and said, okay, assign points or money to the projects you want to see. So you gave this one 300 or three points, and then this one one point, this one one point. And then we just saw where those all came in. The list of projects that we ended up being on the shortlist were the Memorial Park Fountain. We know it doesn't work. It's a disaster, the current fountain. Basically, we, to fix the Memorial Park Fountain means we have to either entirely replace it as it exists today or put a new fountain there. Gainesboro Park Adult Fitness Stations, that's another project. We've always talked about Victory Park. Victory Park is down at the end of Sylvan by the baseball diamond. Right now, there's that one lonely set of swings that are there. We've talked about doing a natural play area with natural play elements. We've got enough play structures in town. This would be something else for kids to use their imagination and run and climb and jump on.
And this is from, this is from the one that we did five years ago, from Gainesboro.
Yeah. We have a Gainesboro Park pathway lighting project. We know it gets very dark along certain segments of the pathway there at night, but people are still using the pathways. You see oftentimes when it gets dark, people have their camping, have lamps on, walking the dog. So, you know, that tells you that, yeah, you can say the park closes at dusk, but let's be realistic. We have people using it. A pathway lighting project would improve safety and usability of the park. Because I'm sure there's some people who would use the pathways but are uncomfortable doing so because there's no lighting right now for significant segments of it. There's a tennis backboard. That was all part of the plan. That's been something that's still in the works, it's just a question of where and when. That would be in the tennis courts, and this allows a single tennis player to practice by themselves, hitting the ball against this backboard which returns it to them. And then, of course, finally, the Gainesboro Pavilion. So this is the existing shelter building. This is the patio area. You've got the tennis courts and then the playgrounds over here. So this would be where that new pavilion would go, which would provide covered outdoor gathering space. So, apologize, you probably can't read this, but the results of the survey, and let me just read it to you since you probably can't read it, but the, I can barely read it on my computer. The top vote getters were basically the Gainesboro Pathway Lighting and the Gainesboro Park Pavilion. More people gave points to the pavilion. Slightly fewer people gave points to Parkway Pathway Lighting, but the people who did give points to Parkway Pathway Lighting gave it more points. So you've got more, more total points for the pavilion, but you've got a higher, the highest average points is for the pathway lighting. So those are very clearly projects kind of tied for first. And then coming in next, you had the Memorial Park Fountain. That one got the third most points. And actually, the average points for that were very high as well. So the people who did give their points really want that fountain fixed. So they get that fountain fixed.
Scott will be thrilled.
Or not.
He's excited already.
And then the natural play area, the tennis backboard and the fitness stations all were a distant tied for third, basically. So of course, all of these have different dollar values. Over the next five years, we've identified funding sources which should allow us to do all of these projects. Question is, which ones do we do first, second, third? So the Recreation Commission went through and did a prioritization exercise. They chose or identified the pathway lighting and the, and actually, they came up with a new project. This came out of the input we got through the prioritization process. So this was a project that we added. It was adding additional seating and shade to the artificial grass portion of the pool, which is actually Mulberry Park. That little area was donated and it's.
Little-known fact.
Little-known fact, that is Mulberry Park. So adding some seating and shade there, so improving that.
Can I comment about this since I was, I just wanted, when we were doing our prioritization, you know, we're looking at the pavilion and the, and the lighting, and we talked about, you know, like a nice-to-have versus like a basic safety issue. And that's, I just want to tell you, like, that's why we prioritized the lighting first because that's a safety issue. I mean, that will affect more people than a pavilion than, you know, I mean, people are, can fall, trip, I mean, there's a million things that can happen in the dark. You know, more people would use it, like you said, if they can see and they feel safe. So that's, I just want to give some input. That's why we did this.
That was why the choice between.
The choice between the pavilion and the lighting, we went with it. Pavilion's great, and I think it will benefit a lot of people. And clearly, people are very interested in it because, you know, we voted. But like I said, the lights, that's, that was the reasoning, in case anyone was curious.
Good. Thank you. Excellent. So priority two is the then shelter pavilion structure and then the natural play area. And it was very interesting, when you, we looked at the results from the ice cream social versus the online voting, because we had the prioritization in person at the ice cream social and then we made it available online. The number of kids at the ice cream social, the natural play area, was actually almost the top vote getter amongst the kids at the ice cream social. Online voting for, you know, for adults, didn't dig it as much. I thought that was pretty interesting, and I'm glad to see that it made it to priority two for that result because we're, you know.
And that was always discussed, so that's, it's cool to see that the kids still are interested.
Yes. So the kids were excited about that. So that was good.
Everybody has a voice.
Yes.
There you go. That's right.
And then priority three, these will be the projects that we get done, but it'll be a few years, is the tennis backboard, the fitness stations, and then the repair or replace the fountain. And you know, the garden club has some interest in getting the fountain done, so that may actually happen sooner if they do want to sponsor that project. But we'll see. That's, that's not certain at this point.
It's all about money.
But if they want to fund that.
They have to put somebody in.
Absolutely, let them fund that. And then something like the tennis backboard, which is $5,000 to $6,000, that could actually move up in time because it's, it's the smallest cost. If we have a surplus at the end of a year, hopefully, we can get that done sooner. We'll see. We'll just take that opportunistically. So that's just the, the quick overview of the plan. There's obviously a lot more text and graphics and charts and discussion and, you know, 30 pages, 40 pages of that in the plan, which you're more than welcome to read if you'd like. The link, the plan is available at this direct link. It's also posted on the homepage of the website now. So the process is we have to call for a public hearing. The DNR requires that we have at least 30 days' notice before the public hearing. So tonight, we are scheduling the public hearing or asking the Commission to schedule the public hearing for the November meeting, which will give us time to give plenty of notice per DNR requirements. They'll give two months of this, being out on the street for any kind of comment that the public wants to provide to, to us on the draft plan. And then we'll come back with this in November for a public hearing and then consideration for approval of that meeting or later meeting by the City Commission. So the Recreation Commission has recommended this forward to you. Approval lies in your hands in a future meeting.
Excellent. Well, I wanted, I wanted to compliment you and all the, and the Rec Commission for a really interesting reading report. I didn't compare it to last, to the last one, but it seemed richer than the last one. I enjoyed just reading the history of recreation in Pleasant Ridge, and that was fascinating in and of itself.
Right.
But I think the most exciting part is all the write-in responses. So people were asked what they want, and I just found the underground movie theater to be particularly interesting. And then since I spent a lot of time at the pool, I found very fascinating that somebody said less guest passes for the pool and somebody else said more guest passes for the pool. So for all those that complained, they didn't, couldn't get a seat or, you know, complained that the pool was.
People have very strong opinions about the number of guest passes people and guest process at the pool. And it's very strong opinions on both, I know it's both sides, but it's on both sides. That actually reminds me, you mentioned that. One of the items that we did get, and I just want to be very upfront about this. One of the items that we got a lot of comments on were swings in the park behind the community center. Because there used to be swings there. When we reorganized things and added the patio, we lost a little bit of space. So the issue with swings is they require a large safety zone around them. So it came down to we could, we could put in the play structure we did or we could put in swings, and they have almost the same safety zone. So if we were to add swings to that park back there, we would have to put them across the green space that we have in the park. So you'd have patio, green space, swings, volleyball court. It, it takes up a lot of real estate. And the way that that space is used by the summer program, by the summer camp program, we really need the larger green space area. If you're going to have a bigger event back there, the swings would get in the way of that. So for that reason, swings aren't really feasible for our programming and use needs for that whole area. So that was something that we did have to lose. So we know, we hear it, but Roosevelt's Playground has some great swings. There you go. Encourage you to avail yourself of those if you feel the need.
And the other thing, there's a lot of, a lot of discussion around the food that's being served at the pool. I'm still trying to wrap my head around healthy frozen pizza options.
Can those four words go together?
I don't think they'd go to, you know, even if it's frozen broccoli, I just don't.
And that's a similar issue, you know, the healthy food vending machines where they throw all the food out.
There you go. Right, exactly. I'm sure everybody's going to be running up there.
Right. And Scott, you know, we tried healthy options one summer, and it was the lowest sales we had at the concession stand ever.
It's so tough, and it's such a bummer, because you don't want your kids eating tons of junk and sugar.
Well, that's why coolers were invented, bring it in.
Right, yes.
Just mention healthy food to Scott and...
I've seen his head pop up.
For half out, yes. Another one of the, the vein popping, yes. Let's see, what do I, do I have to do anything?
You have a motion.
I need a motion to approve the public hearing. I had to get to that page.
Mayor, I move a public hearing to be scheduled for Tuesday, November 13th, 2018, at 7:30 PM to solicit public comments on the 2019 through 2023 Pleasant Ridge Parks and Recs Master Plan.
Is there support?
Support.
Any further discussion? Let's have a vote, please.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Krzyzewski?
Yes.
Commissioner Wal?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes, motion carries. Okay. Next item, discussion regarding placement of flags in and on city-owned property. I believe Commissioner Krzyzewski. Give it to you.
Thank you, Mayor. As many of you know, the United States of America lost a longtime public servant, Senator John McCain passed away recently, and in honoring his services to this country, the flags in Pleasant Ridge were lowered to half-staff. That initiated a conversation, a discussion about other ways that we honor those who have served our country. And taking Senator McCain's service as an example, there was a question of flying the POW MIA flag that has had a history going back to the Vietnam War of remembering the men and women of all nations, but in particular, United States servicemen and women who went into battle and never returned. And so there was a grassroots organization in the 70s and 80s who really advanced the idea of flying the POW MIA flag as a show of respect and remembrance and a signal that these great men and women would never be forgotten. In, I think it was 1997 or '98, President, then-President Bill Clinton signed it into law that seven times a year that these flags would be flown on federal buildings in remembrance. And in particular, September 21st would be remembered going forward as POW MIA Remembrance Day. So learning about this history and knowing how much this community values our servicemen and women, both at Memorial Park and with our Blue Ridge designation at Wellesley and Woodward, it was thought appropriate that Pleasant Ridge join federal government and other communities in this state in flying the MIA POW flag. So that was a conversation that was initiated with that in mind. In addition to that conversation, there was also acknowledgement that there's another flag that symbolizes the values that we share in this community, and that's the Rainbow Pride Flag, and that Ferndale, our neighbors to the south, and Mayor Dave Coulter and the current City Council in Ferndale had made it a priority to symbolize their commitment to inclusion and their goals as a welcoming city, and they've since installed the Rainbow Flag as symbolizing the values that they share. I thought it perfectly matched our values here and offered the idea that we fly both flags. The POW flag, obviously, on the, on the, on the United States flagpole, and then the Rainbow Flag, in addition to the MIA POW flag in the City Commission chambers. So that was the initiation of the conversation. It was brought to me that we should have just a conversation about our willingness tonight. So I appreciate Mayor and Jim for putting this on the agenda, and I think it's, I believe it's something that fits perfectly with our values here in the city of Pleasant Ridge, and I think it's something that the very, the vast majority of our residents would support. So I would just like to, that's just like an introduction. You know, I know we've exchanged some emails on it, but I think it's appropriate that we discuss it at this table tonight. So that's kind of the introduction of where I was coming from.
Open it up for discussion. Comments, questions?
Sure. When I heard about the idea, I thought it would be nice to be able to fly both flags at some point in time in the year. Whether we could do it this year on the 21st or another 21st was a question of logistics, not so much a question of whether it would be something appropriate for the city, just a question of logistics. And then it hadn't occurred to me, where all do we have flags in the city? For example, we have four flags here, there are flags on Woodward, flags at the community center, and it might be appropriate to put them in different places depending upon the which flags can come down and which flags must be flown at all times. But the idea of it makes sense to me.
Did you agree? Is that, what about flags in council chambers?
To me, it was, again, a logistical question about some of the flags should never come down. And so if there's a fifth flagpole or, I don't know how, I don't know what is required in terms of displaying the flags that we already display, and which ones always remain flown, and which ones can be interchanged for periods.
Yeah, so Jim, I mean, we just talked to Jim briefly, and he was just asking for direction for staff and in the form of a motion or just a directive.
Right, so what needs to happen?
So, right, so tonight...
Brett brings up questions that need, staff needs to do.
Exactly. So we need guidance from you on basically what, where, and when. Is it POW MIA and Rainbow Flag only at this point? Are we trying to craft something that allows you to add flags in the future? Ferndale's motion says that it's basically Ferndale's council that decides.
Right.
Okay. But for the short term, you know, they had, the motive force for them was, I believe, the, the Rainbow Flag. And did they also have POW MIA? Yeah, they did, yes. So we can do the same thing. Now, for outdoor flags, is POW MIA something we're going to fly outdoor on one of the flagpoles all the time at certain occasions? We need guidance on that. Is it in all the locations or perhaps just Memorial Park? Since it is our memorial park, it might be a good location to fly the POW or MIA flag. Does that also need to occur at the community center or at the Blue Star Memorial?
So should we research this and come up with something or decide right now?
I think, I don't know that we need to decide that right now, but these are questions that we have to answer before, you know, before we go and do.
That might be more work for us to be thinking about this and then bring it back in October, you think?
Yeah, I'm, I'm comfortable, and that's why, you know, I, you know, wanted to counsel Jim and, you know, like everyone at this table is, you know, how do we proceed on something like this? I'm more than happy to participate in some sort of, you know, instruction. I, I, I think just putting that on staff's radar is something that we're interested in doing, and then getting feedback from them as far as directive, I'm, I'm comfortable doing that. If we have to make a motion to instruct them to devise or develop a, a flag policy, I know the Ferndale one is very brief. It's basically two paragraphs that establish their ability and their willingness to display those particular flags. So, yeah, so I, if Jim just needs kind of like a nudge or if he needs a motion, I'm prepared to do either.
Well, okay, let me, let me ask this question, because we can, we don't need to decide tonight.
Yeah.
And we can put together a framework for you with some questions, you know, to, to fill in the blanks in there. But general questions going forward. Are there other flags we want to consider at this point besides Rainbow and POW MIA, or are we, are we focusing on those two to, to start?
Well, speaking for myself, I feel those two are most reflective and inappropriate at this time, so I would just limit it to those two.
Okay. Does anybody feel differently?
No, that's intentional.
I think, I think from my perspective, it's the question of the ability to, to have permanent and non-permanent flags. So two of those would be those two. Something else may come up five years from now, who knows? But just this ability to, to change a flag feels more, there's a significance to it to me that I'm probably not aware of.
Right.
Yeah. I don't, I don't have the, yeah, I, without the knowledge, I don't know what the answer to that is.
And I think, I think Ferndale's policy is along the lines, I would also suggest, is that the Commission would have to approve any new flags being displayed, or that would be actually, you have to take down the road.
Yeah, I think, the, the way I read it is that someone may have brought a flag to city property.
Right.
And the city should decide what the city displays. So that, that was how I read it, and then they chose these.
Yes.
Okay. Make a formal motion or not?
Yeah, I would just make a motion that we instruct staff to develop a framework and a policy for the display of flags on city property.
So, yeah. Support, okay. May we take a vote?
Commissioner Krzyzewski?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Wal?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes. Okay, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Kirk.
All right. Next item on the agenda, City Commission is going to move into a closed session under Section 8E of the Open Meetings Act, consult with our attorney regarding trial or settlement strategy in connection with USCA 18-1253, Stallworth versus City of Pleasant Ridge et al. May I have a motion to move into closed session, please?
Your Honor, I move the Pleasant Ridge City Commission move into closed session under Section 8E of the Open Meetings Act to consult with our attorney regarding trial or settlement strategy in connection with USCA 18-1253, Stallworth versus City of Pleasant Ridge et al.
Is there support?
Second.
Amy, can you take a vote?
Commissioner Krzyzewski?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Wal?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes. We are agreed, we will move into closed session. Please shall we turn? Okay. Reconvene the meeting?
Need a motion to reconvene.
Oh, I need a motion to reconvene the meeting.
Mayor, I move, we reconvene the meeting.
I second that.
May we take a vote?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Wal?
Yes.
Commissioner Krzyzewski?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes. Meeting is reconvened. Is there a motion on, we need a motion.
Mayor, I move that the City Commission accept the advice of counsel regarding the mediator's proposal in case USCA 18-1253, Stallworth versus City of Pleasant Ridge et al.
Is there a second? Okay. Any further discussion? Okay. Can we have a vote, please?
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Krzyzewski?
Yes.
Commissioner Wal?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes. Motion carries. Move on to the City Manager's Report.
I have no report.
I figured you would have done it, right? Okay, well, that was good. Last item is other business. Please come forth with other business.
Well, I know Mayor mentioned this last month, and we always meet the second Wednesday, so that will be tomorrow. So just a reminder that Mark Kralansky's 1968, the year that rocked the world, will be our September Book Club selection, and we'll be meeting tomorrow at the community center, but we may move it outside depending on what the community center looks like inside.
And the weather's supposed to be nice.
And the weather will be nice, so we'll sit outside and discuss 1968. I just want to thank Mayor for mentioning it last month and, you know, talking about how great 1968 was.
It was a very good year.
And that's the book, the year.
Yes, yes. Some of us remembered quite well.
Some remembered it.
Some of us kind of vaguely remembered, yes, yes.
Someone has made a, a book for like reminders. Yes. So that'll be tomorrow. Thank you.
Well, we know the Tigers won that year, so...
Yeah.
We're, we're trying to relive 68 for a lot of reasons.
Yes.
Okay. It was a pleasure and an honor being able to do the book club last month.
Thank you, thank you.
Any other issues? Any other items for discussion? No?
I don't know.
No? Okay, well, with that, I will ask, is there a motion to adjourn?
I make, I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
Is there support?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We adjourn.
So hurry up.